Okay, we'll call this regular meeting to order of September 19th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor and Coats.
Here.
Jim Stout.
Here.
Roger Smith.
Here.
Dan Delaney.
Here.
Justin Troyer.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All those able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, with that, I would approve a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move, second.
Motion made by Roger, seconded by Jim. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried five zero. Then we have the consent agenda, which contains the following items for approval: the August 29 special meeting minutes, the September 6 special meeting minutes, the September 6 regular meeting minutes, payment of claims, listing of bills, August 22 financial, 2022 financial reports, and informational reports. Is there a motion to move the consent agenda?
So move, I'll second that.
Motion made by Justin, seconded by Roger. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried five zero. With that, we're down to community concerns. And Fred, Fred Ports is here to speak. And since you used to be on this side of the counter, you know you've got to go into the podium, so.
Well, I have a number of questions. The new street over there, why is it so much narrower than it was previously?
In what we're putting in, you mean?
Yep, Third Avenue.
Third Avenue. You know, we've done that because it's a lot less money to take four feet off of it.
Is that all that was taken off, four foot?
I believe so.
It seems to be a lot more than that. And there is an apartment house just on that street, and they have no off-street parking. Where are they to park? They used to park alongside. You get cars on both sides, it's going to be pretty close. And then in the wintertime, the snow, when I lived there, was never plowed curb to curb. There's maybe three swipes, one down the middle, one on the side, and that was it. And there was like probably five, six foot of snow from the curb to the plowed street. And the sidewalk, I mean, nothing is getting done. There's nobody, for the last how many days, there's nobody working there. They're not getting it filled in, they're not getting it leveled off. Nothing is getting done, there's nobody around. It's just standing, out of standstill. Then the sidewalk coming down, down to Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street, it was a nice curb sidewalk, and it came right out to the curb. And the curb had a nice area to get for access to wheelchairs and all that sort of thing. Now, they stopped right by the sidewalk that comes from the east over the railroad tracks, and it's about 10-inch drop-off there. I mean.
Yeah, I noticed that too, Fred, and I don't think they're complete with that area.
I mean, and they didn't put a sidewalk on the south side. I asked one guy, why not? Well, there is no sidewalk going across railroad tracks on that south side. There isn't on the north side either. You have to walk off the sidewalk.
Right.
On the cross railroad track.
And the south side is zoned as residential there, too, so. Yeah, I did notice that, too, where they eliminated that sidewalk. I don't know where that authority came from for them to do that.
And the crosswalks itself used to be very nice and smooth and wheelchair accessible. None of them are like that, you know, you replaced a lot of them, and now this is the old style. I mean, it just doesn't add up, I mean, to go backwards with it. And some of the houses I see, the Episcopal Church has a parking area. The building and zoning resident has a parking area. And the possibility of the library, that has a big, large parking area. Some of the driveways are together, and it's a little consistency. And some have sidewalks going up to their front door. Not all of them.
Right.
No consistency whatsoever. Any reason?
When they, I know that when they go through and do surveys prior to construction, when they're doing the planning, what they talk about primarily is replacing the driveways as they were with and location. Sidewalks, that kind of depends on the condition, what the specifications call for. Really don't have a lot of information on that that I can share with you, Fred, that I would feel comfortable with. Otherwise, it might be just a little bit of BS on my part, so I don't want to do that.
Mr. Mayor, Travis is here tonight. He could follow up with Mr. Ports specifically and address those concerns or questions if you'd like him to.
Yeah, we can do it, yes. And he'll be joining us, I don't know if.
He's on now.
He's on now.
He's listening.
We can get, we can get the engineer to follow up with you on some of these more specific items of your questions.
Yeah, that sidewalk, when it comes from the railroad tracks and over, and then it goes way up, and then it's flat where the sidewalk comes from the north, and then it drops way down on the opposite side, and then right off where it doesn't go south to the curb, at least a 10-inch drop.
Yeah, I would say that's an error, Fred, and that needs to be corrected because it's not even handicap accessible the way it is right now. And I know there was some issues with the sidewalks in that area, and the contractor was trying out some new equipment that turned out not to work that well, and then went back to the old-style forms and stuff. And I'm sure Travis can give you some specifics on that. But yeah, there is a learning curve there that didn't work out very well in that your block and the block north.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on. We'll go to legal, which is introducing ordinance 138, fourth series.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is proposed amendment to the city code regarding the public library, and it would amend the city code to remove any references to the school district as a participant in the public library language of the city code. And that's before you for introduction tonight for a vote on October 3rd.
Would someone like to introduce the change to ordinance 138, fourth series?
I'll introduce ordinance 138, fourth series.
Thank you, Justin. That'll be at a roll call vote on October 3rd. Okay, then we go down to engineering. We've got Second Street Southeast Utility Improvement Project, pay request number seven from Dunick.
The pay request is in the amount of $133,959.34 for work done in the Second Street project. Boltland Mink has reviewed it and is recommending council approval. And again, Travis is on the screen, so he can answer any questions.
Anything you want to add, Travis?
I'll just say that the primary purpose of this pay request was to reduce retainage. The work is substantially complete. We have a few concrete punchless items to do yet. But there was no need to be holding that retainage with the amount of work to be done. There's still $33,000 in retainage being held, so we, the contractor requested to release some, and by statute, we're actually supposed to release it sooner than this, so. But they did request it, and I would recommend approval of that. And I do, I anticipate the remaining items will get completed in the next month or two, and we'll be able to close it out before the end of the year.
Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion for pay request number seven in the amount of $133,959.34 to Dunick Incorporated.
So move.
Moved by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Roger. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried unanimously, five zero. Then we have the 11th Street Northeast Extension, 2021 Improvement. And this would be the second and final payment to the double-degravel.
Yes, and that's in the amount of $51,494.2. And again, Boltland Mink is recommending council approval.
Any questions?
This is.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is for the work completed last year, or the project that was left last year. Storm sewer, concrete structures, and pipe were not available until this summer, so this is the balance of the work, which was the storm sewer and then closeout of the project. So this, everything's complete, and we recommend closeout here before we start the second phase of this work, get this fall.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the pay request, the second and final pay for double-degravel for $51,494.2?
I would so move.
Moved by Jim, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Justin. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Carried four one. Okay, with that, we go down to new business, and that's going to be Resolution 2022-50. And I'll turn this back over to Jeff and Rebecca Kurtz at this time.
Mr. Mayor, the council approved funding the final payment due on the truck, which, after speaking with Corey Potem over the weekend, should be delivered in November under the current schedule. But in any event, we need funds of $311,000 to fund that final payment, and the council approved going out with the sale of an equipment certificate. And Rebecca is here tonight, as you said, on behalf of Ellers. Ellers handled the sale of that, those bonds for that certificate, and she's here remotely to tell us the result of that. And I would add that she sent me a sale day report, copy of which was at your place when you came in tonight. Take it away, Rebecca.
Good evening, Rebecca from Ellers, and thank you for allowing me to join her shortly. As Jeff mentioned, we did accept bids for a bid in our office today for the sale of the bonds related to the fire truck. We did receive one bid, however, I want to note that while the sale day packet lists First Farmers Merchant National Bank as the winning bid, it was a joint bid that was, or joint interest rate that was submitted by both First Farmers and Merchants National Bank, First Bank and Trust, and First State Bank Southwest. First Farmers and Merchants is the lead, but all three of the local banks are participating and will take a portion of the bond that we are selling today. The interest rate that we are recommending the council consider for award is 4.25%. The bonds have a term of 10 years as per the maximum statutory authority for equipment certificates. They would be callable at any time for either the opportunity to pay off the funds in full or to refund if that option did ever present itself. But with that, again, the interest rate that we are recommending consideration and award is 4.25%. I want to note with that, while it is slightly higher than maybe some of the rates that we would see going out into the market competitively with issue this size and with the participation and support from the local banks, we are able to significantly cut costs of issuance, which include underwriters' discounts, rating agencies, and some of those other associated costs. And so with that, I am happy to answer any questions. There is a sale day report that outlines the levy moving forward if you do choose to award this. It is roughly $43,000 annually over the term. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, anybody have any questions on what we're getting into here? Good job, Rebecca, not even getting one question one here, so. So what we need to do then is to, with that recommendation, and that would all be in Resolution 2022-50, correct? Would be to.
Correct.
Yes.
Your bond council has provided a resolution to consider, and if you do approve, that funds will be available by October 6 in advance of your state of the truck.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to proceed on Resolution 2022-50.
So move.
Go ahead, Roger. I'll move Resolution 2022-50.
I'd second that.
Okay. Motion made by Roger, seconded by Jim. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried five zero. Thank you, Rebecca, very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to Resolution 2022-51, and actually 52 follows right behind it, probably so we can go ahead, I'll turn it over to Jeff to give an explanation, so.
Yes, we will be assessing for both the projects that you just mentioned, the 2021 Millon Overlay and the Second Street Southeast Utility Project. And our assessment policy follows state law and requires that there be a public hearing on the proposed assessment. If, with the approval of these resolutions, then affected property owners would be notified of the proposed assessments, and you would take comment from those property owners at the scheduled public hearing, which is stated in the resolution.
So I'd entertain a motion to proceed with our, to approve and proceed with Resolution 2022-51, which is the Millon Overlay project.
I would so move.
Moved by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Roger. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried five zero. Then we have Resolution 2022-52, which Jeff does outline, but this would be on the Second Street Southeast Utility Improvement Project. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to proceed with Resolution 2022-52.
I would so move Resolution 2022-52.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Justin. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried five zero. Okay, Resolution 2022-53, and this is setting our preliminary levy. And Jeff, you want to kind of go through the public, what we've been doing here in the last couple of work sessions?
Happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. This is the process we follow every year in setting the budget for the upcoming year. This year, we must have the preliminary levy submitted to the county by September 30 of this year. That will be subject to the final levy, which is generally decided at the last council meeting in December, but must be to the county no later than the last day of December. So while this is just a preliminary levy, there's still room for adjustments. The council's had several meetings. We had another one just before the council meeting tonight discussing the 2023 budget. We again talked about some issues that we feel we may be able to reduce going forward. But in any event, preliminary levy that's contained in Resolution 2022-53 would set a preliminary levy at 13.5%.
Okay, is there a motion to proceed with Resolution 2022-53, setting a preliminary levy at 13.5% increase?
So move.
Moved by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Roger. Any questions or comments?
I'll just comment that I can't support a 13.5% increase based on the presentation of that increase.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor of Resolution 2022-53, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Carried four one. Okay. Resolution 2022-54, and this is on some signings that we've got a grant for, and I'll turn it over to Deb to kind of clue us in on what's going on here, so.
Thank you. The city received a grant in the amount of $2,900 from the statewide health improvement program, SHIP, to purchase and install wayfaring signs for the Indian Lakes Trail. This is, I did pass out pictures, everyone hasn't except you guys in the audience. But these are pictures that I had found, saw in Byron, and they're very nice. They're cedar poles. We decided to go with cedar poles because the longevity of a cedar pole is double that, and that's my understanding of a treated pole. And we're going to be working with a local tailored signs to create our little signs. And we have picked eight spots to put these cedar poles at, and will take us to Indian Lakes Trail, the monument downtown, the square, the soccer fields, to some wayfaring signs for around town, so. And, excuse me, sorry, Roger. Pipestone and building material, we need eight poles, and we're going to purchase six, and they're willing to donate two. And that resolution, this resolution here will accept those two poles.
What was the cost total then for the signs? Will you have enough, the grant, to cover the cost?
We have enough money in the grant to cover the poles and the hardware to install the poles. I don't have a true cost yet. I'm still working with Mary Kay Delaney on that through Tailored Signs, and we'll be looking and seeking out some donations to cover the cost of those signs as well. But this money, this $2,900 had to be spent this year, and it can be used for equipment and labor. And so that's why we're going to purchase them.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2022-54 to accept the donation.
Okay, Roger, moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim, any further questions or comments?
Deb, the location of the poles, the proposed locations, was that recommendations through what commission?
There was no commission. Myron and I had sat down and just talked about where the poles could go. And so it would be First Farmers and Merchants at the corner right there so that we can go in all directions, north, south, east, and west. That is for the Indian Lakes Trail, so we had to be very aware of making sure each pole got us to the Indian Lakes Trail because that was specified in the grant. And so there would be one at, for the corner of First Farmers and Merchants Bank there. For the square, there possibly, we could put one at the trailhead, at the Casey Jones Trailhead. There are some restrictions and regulations that I'm checking into. Ninth Street and 75, and that can, that would show people to the monument and the Indian Lakes Trail. And then we'd have one in Second, I'm looking at our little math. That was true. Harmon Park, we would have one at Harmon Park and Highway 30. And then South Hiawatha and Highway 30, and then Second. And Eighth Avenue, yes. I believe that was it.
Yeah.
I should have specified that, there was Pipestone Building Materials that donated two of those poles.
Yeah, it's in the resolution, yes.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
I would, if anybody has any other ideas or would place them, this isn't set in stone yet.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to discuss it with the planning commission or something and see what ideas they have. Great.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried five zero. The next item is item F on your agenda, to approve the resignation of Roger Alguzman from the Planning Commission, and I believe Roger is here to speak to that.
I'm here to speak to that.
Please go to the podium and speak into the microphone, please.
I'm not here to speak to that at all. I'm here to speak against Jennifer Cronin being approved.
Oh, okay, so, okay, later, okay. So with that, we have to approve the resignation of Roger Alguzman from the Planning Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Roger, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Justin. Okay, yeah, all in favor, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried five zero. Okay, then, item G is Jennifer Cronin has expressed interest on being on the Planning Commission, and has submitted her letter of interest. And I believe, Roger, you want to speak to, about, excuse me, Jennifer, go ahead.
I worked with her on the Democrat County Committee for five years. And I accept that other people have better value, different, not better, different value systems than I have, and I'm patient with that. And I don't get in arguments about that, everybody makes their own choices. But I found that she has a Harvey Weinstein style of management. The first clue was after the first meeting I went to, we get on the sidewalk afterwards, and half the group is there. And she says to me that I can't do anything through the party unless I do her. And I was so shocked, I just got on my bicycle and left. Halfway through the parking lot, I think I'll just quit, even though 30 years ago I was on the county central committee. I had done that before. And by the time I was halfway home, I thought, that kind isn't going to tell me what to do. So I thought I'd work in the party and do what I could. And I found if I told her what I wanted to do, it'd get blocked. If I wrote the governor, something would happen. And I could do a lot more without it. Then I ran for Senate, and she, she's the only one I emailed that I was going to run. And in a Senate week, I called the Senate district. And even though she'd been saying for months, I mean, she wasn't trying to find anybody. She even said the Republicans are here are too good to run against. And when I ran, immediately, they got somebody to block me. And since I'm pro-life in the Democrat primary, I didn't have much of a chance. I got 24% of the vote. But, so then I talked to Bryan Abrahamson, who ran six years ago.
Roger, can I interrupt just a second here? What specifically, based on your experiences of working with her, that would make her not qualified to be on the Planning Commission?
Because the same thing happened to Bryan. If you don't do her, she tells everybody you're mentally ill. And if you're going to have people working with her, and either you've got to have sex with her or get slandered, that's a nasty situation. And the same thing happened to Bryan, and it happened to me. If you don't, if you got, somebody has different values, that's their choice. But if you're going to try to force me to have different values to work with me, you know, that's kind of disgusting. So I think she just doesn't, you know, she gets fired from fire and decision blinds me when I never talk to them people. She'll do anything to undermine you if you don't cooperate with her system. So one time, I talked to someone from the state. They called up for fundraising, and I told them. And the next county meeting, she gets up and says, yeah, he called the state and told them I'm a whore. And a couple of people says, well, didn't they know already? And.
Okay, wait. Yep.
So she just don't have the values.
Isn't that our policy?
No, that's on community concern.
I don't think she can cooperate with people with different value systems than she does. I don't think she's appropriate to work with. That's all I got to say.
Okay, well, thank you, Roger, for your input. We'll go back to, we have the position in front of us. Jennifer Cronin has expressed interest in being on the Planning Commission, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Moved by Justin, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dan, okay. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Carried four one. Okay, item H was Consider WM Plumbing and Heating Request for Historical Loan Grant.
Yes, Westa Matisse submitted a request for a historic loan grant to tuck point and replace blocks on a building he owns at 202 East Main Street. He's requesting a loan of $5,600, grant of $5,600, and owner equity of $4,800. He's noting that this work would be done next year. You have, just in your preliminary budget, approved a fund for next year's BLYT program, but I thought it was a good time to remind the council just where we stood on this year's BLYT monies. But in any event, that's a request before you from Westa Matisse on behalf of WM Plumbing and Heating.
I would so move we approve the request of WM Plumbing and Heating for the historic loan grant.
Okay, Dan, moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Roger. Seconded by Roger, any questions or comments?
Oh, I was looking at his application sheet or whatever you want to call it. It looked like they were going to do the inside work this fall. And then there was another bid for the outside work next year. And that 16 was going to be done this fall, is the way I was reading it.
I can get clarification on that if you'd wish me to.
But I think, I think they could get it done this fall, according, the inside work.
Okay.
It would be improvement for the building because the building does need some, some work done to it.
Okay. With that, I will call for a motion to proceed. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carried five zero. Then we have possible use of American Rescue Plan funds and that's on page 54 of your handout.
Yes, in the context of discussions regarding the 2023 budget, I was asked to identify some possible uses of American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, that, a copy of that document was in the council's packet. I, we also discussed it previous to the meeting tonight. And I advise the council that there's two general areas of use of those funds. And the biggest, uh, uh, use of funds that I've seen and looking at and sitting in our webinars and what other communities are doing is infrastructure. We in fact use some of the, uh, last year's American Rescue Plan money for purchase of water meters and storm sewer installation. That is again a possible use. Uh, we also use it to offset lost revenue from the COVID years. Uh, but those are two general, uh, areas of usage. Uh, we have to use those funds by 12/31, so we're not up against the time clock yet. Uh, we've talked about some possible infrastructure uses as well. Um, but I wanted to present that to the council and see where you wish me to go with it.
Kind of open it up for discussion here before we start making motions, if you have questions.
Um, on that, I'm going back to that industrial road. We were going to check with Travis or see how close or how accurate that estimate was.
Correct.
Or, or what it is now. And I don't remember if it was around.
Travis, do you have updated numbers yet or would that be ready for October 3rd?
Uh, I believe I ran a quick calculation there. Let me double check this. I want to say it was close to 300,000.
And, and was it like two something before, do you remember Travis?
Two fifty.
Two fifty?
Yeah, I think it was like two fifty, yeah. And I, I just took the numbers based off of our current construction project for, uh, what concrete would cost.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? We could, uh, you can, you can move to do something with it tonight or we can table it until the October 3rd for, for the recommendations.
I think, uh, I'm going to move to table it just, uh, we got a few things that, to think about here and, uh, and as long as it, it has to be spent before the first of the year, correct?
Correct.
So we have a little time. I mean, I don't want to.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we should see what would be the best use of the money before just, I mean, not spend it just to spend it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I would second that motion.
Okay, so the motion may be Roger, to table till October 3rd, seconded by Dan. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carried five zero. Okay, then we have, uh, schedule a public hearing to vacate alleys.
Bud Johnston has submitted a request to have the council vacate the north, south and east, west alleys in block 64, Wallbridge and Moore's Edition, obviously adjacent to the depot property. And part of that vacation process is to hold a public hearing. Staffs recommending that public hearing be held October 17th at approximately 6:30.
Okay, is there a motion to proceed with the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Roger, sec- is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jim. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carried five zero. Okay, then item K is approve advertising for an airport consultant.
I met last week with the new regional director for the FAA for Minnesota. And, uh, as part of that conversation, we reviewed the airport and current needs and future needs. And FAA recommended that the city advertise, uh, a request for qualifications is what they call it, uh, for a engineering firm that could perform or rather put together a master plan. In the RFQ form that was in your council packet that went out Friday, uh, it had slightly different scope of services. But I got clarification from FAA today. And they would prefer to see us go out for requests for qualifications for a master plan. That was the updated one that was also at your pack, or at your places when it came in tonight. In any event, FAA as a memo states periodically requires cities to advertise for airport consultants. Bolton Mink currently serves as our airport consultant. But this would allow other en- engineering firms to submit a, uh, a proposal showing their qualifications to do, uh, work. And that would be ready for the council to look at on October 3rd to select an airport consultant going forward to prepare that master plan. So that is before you tonight.
October 21st.
I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, I, I had the October 3rd for the next, I'm commenting myself, never mind, I misspoke, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. Anyway, that second meeting in October, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to proceed with the, uh, advertise for an airport consultant?
So moved.
Moved by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Roger, any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Pretty much, uh, don't have a choice, correct?
It was, it's highly recommended by FAA to do that, right. So we don't have much of a choice. So here, no other comments or questions, we'll vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carried five zero. With that, we're down to council liaison reports and it's still before kickoff of the football game. So we're in good shape. Uh, the first one is Human Rights Commission. Uh, the Human Rights Commission is, uh, we continue to meet. Um, it's, um, kind of an interesting process. Uh, and I was explaining this to a, a citizen today because they were wondering what we were talking about. If you can about imagine getting about 12 people together with various ideas or, and baggage that they bring into a meeting to talk about, uh, a broad range of human rights. It's, uh, it was tech, it has taken about a year for the members of that Human Rights Commission to kind of leave their baggage at the door so that, uh, they're not, and, and everyone is prejudiced, you know, so you got to take that in consideration. But to really start moving forward as to what human rights and pipes should look like. And, uh, they're, they're focusing primarily on social justice issues at this point. Uh, nothing specific. So I'll turn it over to Roger to the Economic Development Authority.
Well, we didn't, we didn't have a, a real long meeting, but well, the majority of the meeting or probably all of the meeting was, uh, discussing the 622 Third Avenue Southwest project that we're starting on. It's going to be a, a major project and it, it, it's going to take some time. Um, it'll probably be over a year before it's finished. But it's going to be right at $200,000 project. But it's going to get, uh, some good, uh, good publicity for the location of it. People are going to see what, uh, what the blighted, some of the blighted money is going for. And, uh, the instructors from Minnesota West were there and kind of went through the detail through the plans and stuff and I. And, uh, they had some pictures of the house originally, what it was. And it was, it was quite a house in its day. And I think after they're done, it's going to be quite a house again, so. That, uh, that was, that was the majority of the meeting, so.
And I, and I think too, Roger, we kind of talked a little bit about somewhere midway through the project to do a fundraiser to kind of replenish the, uh, the blinded property fund that used for two rehab houses.
Yeah, the, I mean, it doesn't always work out that we make money or break even on the projects. But I mean, it's part of the, the public. Um, I think they understand that we're not always going to come out ahead on the projects. But the main thing is that we're using the money to, to, uh, to, um, turn out, uh, some nice looking properties that really needed, needed fixing up. And I think, uh, as you drive around, I know my wife and I drove around town and there's a lot of properties that people are starting to fix up around town that I've noticed. And maybe it's kind of, some of this, um, is, is helping with other people take a little more pride in their, in their property and, and start fixing some things up. So I think it's, it's working quite well from, uh, from my opinion anyway. And it's putting property back on our tax rolls, which wasn't before.
Okay, with that, we're down to closing comments.
Just a quick one to remind the folks watching, uh, fall drop off is October 3rd through the 6th from 7:00 AM to, uh, noon, I'm sorry, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, uh, the 3rd through the 6th. And Friday, on the 7th from 7:00 AM till noon. So I got to make sure I got that right, so. 3rd through the 6th, 7 to 7, on October 7th, 7 to noon. Get rid of your stuff.
Any other closing comments?
Is Travis still available? Is he still on?
Yes.
Hi Travis. Dan here. Uh, I've had a few questions on the street project as far as some of the delays that are going on due to, uh, working with the utility companies and, uh, getting things moved and then they're not moved in a timely manner. And just the question that came up was, uh, whose responsibility is that to coordinate with a, a project like that and, and the contractor, uh, to make sure that the utilities that, uh, are there are moved so they can proceed with the work they need to do?
I assume you're speaking specifically about the 10th and 4th Street project?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, uh, my responsibility or the engineer. And the utility companies were notified in January of the potential work. They were also notified of the removals at the time of pre-construction meeting, which was, um, back in June, I believe on that one, early June. Uh, we've been on a weekly communication with them, but, uh, it's, it's been a bit of a struggle to get, get materials ordered. And in the case like on 10th Street, Excel got their relocates done. But, um, I believe it's MediaCom that's still got the cable up on the poles. And we've, they've lost some staff, there's been some turnover. Um, so communications has been a bit of a struggle, uh, as well. Uh, obviously, you know, the switch over from CenturyLink to Lumen, uh, there's a contact there that has left. And we had to go to the, the person that we were, were communicating with prior to, uh, this project for that. So, um, it, it just has not went very smooth on that one, but it hasn't been for a lack of trying.
Sure. I- is there any recourse that the city would have against, uh, uh, these utility companies that are dragging their feet for one reason or another and holding up this project? I mean, we're losing out on some very good weather here. And, uh, you know, that can change quickly this time of year. And if we end up pouring cement in November, I would assume, I'm not an expert, but I would assume that pouring cement in, uh, September is much better than pouring it in November. In this country, anyway.
Yeah, you're correct with that, Dan. Um, I think we're still on track to get the job done. I'm not concerned so much about schedule. They're assuring me the relocations are going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So we're going to keep pushing them. But, uh, you know, recourse, I'd say when it comes to renewal of franchise agreement with utilities, that could be a discussion point.
All right, okay, thank you. And that's something that comes up how often, Jeff?
Generally about every 10 years.
Yeah, so I think we're,
I have a long memory.
We're a long ways off from that because didn't we just certainly, uh, just renewed them not long ago, so. Okay, so we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place when it comes to that type of stuff, the way it sounds, Travis.
Trav- I got a question also for Travis. I don't know if you're aware, earlier, um, gentleman here brought up a couple of questions on the 3rd Avenue Southeast project as far as the sidewalk and, and what's going on there. He said the work is kind of stopped for right now. Is it waiting for the landscaping part of it or, or what are? And then he had a question on the sidewalk that it looked like it wasn't finished yet. Do you know anything about that? That you can answer on that?
Yeah, I was trying to listen in and hear the best I could, the questions. I have never spoke to this individual and to the best of my knowledge, he hasn't reached out to Dustin who's on site daily. Um, but I'd be happy to meet with him and answer any questions. Um, we have been in communication with the number of residents that are about scheduled. And he is on the first phase of work that was paved, um, over a month ago. And they've been working as they have had some extra capacity on the black dirt, uh, placement, uh, which is the step before, obviously, the, uh, curb restoration. Um, so, so that has not been progressing, but that's the contractors. Um, that's, that's on, the project as a whole is on schedule. They're set to pave the remaining four or five blocks that are left, they're going to start next week. So I think things have been moving along quite well. And I think most residents I've talked to are quite happy about, um, where things have been going. Uh, there are some sidewalk panels on the other side of the street from, um, from Mr. Portz, um, that were removed so his neighbors could do their sewer replacement. Um, that's been a bit of a coordination item that's been hanging out there and it's not on us. We've been, uh, doing everything possible to accommodate, uh, the residents and, and doing their own sewer service replacement. So I anticipate those will get done. It's, I forget, was there, what was the other question he had there?
I get, uh, one of the questions he had specifically was, uh, the width of the street is narrower than it was. And, and just to follow up on that, is that street now that's been put in, is that the same width all the way from 5th Street to, uh, Main Street? And I guess.
It is a, it is a consistent width and we narrowed it to match the other streets in the neighborhood. That street was originally wider because, uh, it was intended to be Main, uh, Main Street for the city. Um, you know, way back when, uh, the railroad went through and such. But now that it's developed into residential, uh, I guess the sentiment was that it, uh, the width is not necessary for residential traffic. It should match the rest of the streets in the, in the neighborhood.
Okay, and then the concern was right at the intersection of, uh, 5th Street and 3rd Avenue on the, uh, east side, that'd be the northeast side of that intersection. The sidewalk was put in and there is quite a drop off going from the east and west sidewalk to the, uh, north and south sidewalk at that, at that corner. Yeah, and, and it's not designed as it was in the past with handicap accessible and the, the blind, uh, area there too, um, where it came in to the entire intersection. And now it seems to be just the old fashioned way where it's, uh, just a sidewalk that comes up to the curb. And it doesn't match what was there. And in fact, it doesn't even match on all four corners now. And then the sidewalk directly south of that location along 5th Street going east and west, that sidewalk was eliminated in that area for some reason. Um, the cement was taken up, black dirt was brought in. And just wondering where those decisions come from and, and why that took place.
The, the northeast quadrant, I have to double check that. I know we've made some modifications there to try to avoid the bushes, um, that were on the property line, but on Mr. Portz's property. Um, every, every quadrant, it was designed to be handicap accessible. And I, I'll double check what we have going on there. I know there was a, a handle for a communication, um, line that was, was in that vicinity, but I didn't think we had any egregious, uh, issues there, but I will double check that. On the south side, um, that, uh, we did eliminate that sidewalk because there's, um, the railroad tracks do not. On the south side, that, we did eliminate that sidewalk because there's, the railroad tracks do not have the accessible crossing pads there, so.
Yeah, the railroad eliminated that on us not long, probably 15 years ago, the railroad eliminated that.
Yep.
But, but that area, that area is also zoned as residential there.
Yeah, but, and there is a crossing on the north, the north side sidewalk going across the tracks that the pads do come to that makes it a better location. The spur track doesn't have the crossing pads.
Well, that, that area is, that area is zoned as light resident, or light industrial, where you're allowing the crossing then.
We're talking about quite a bit of technical stuff here. I know Fred is objecting to it, that, that is not complete. Without having the entire council sit through a long conversation, I would recommend that Travis get together with Dan and Fred and, and work these out.
Sorry I imposed on you there for five minutes.
With that, any other closing comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose say no, carried five zero. Thank you.